Good evening. I am really excited to welcome everybody to a joint meeting between the City Council and the Park and Recreation District. They are a separate entity from the city, but we're really happy that we can sit together and hopefully do some collaboration and brainstorming for a potential swimming pool for our community. Before we get started, I would like to first do a roll call for City Council and then the Rec District will do their roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Dennehy. Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith. Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Rec District?
Okay. All right. Roll call for the Rec District. Nick Sartori.
Here.
Joel Dudley.
Here.
Andrew Palmasano.
Here.
Melissa Smines. Here. Ann Cooper-Trayherd.
Here.
Great. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over to Ryan Stevens and Kyle Horn.
All right. Thank you. What we thought we would start tonight was a short presentation, kind of recapping the Rec District Board meeting, making sure that City Council kind of has the same information so we're at the same jumping off point. So I'm going to turn that over to Kyle so he can do that presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Before we get into the presentation, I did want to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you, City Council, for continued support in opening up a workshop to have a discussion. We appreciate that very much. We also want to thank citizens for a pool, for being risk takers and having a passion for getting citizens involved and seeking solutions. It's not always easy, but they are doing a great job so far. I also want to thank the Rec District Board. They made some very hard decisions on behalf of the community to keep them safe and maintain the organization's visions. That's always not the popular thing, but that doesn't mean it wasn't the right thing. And I do want to recognize the Board for all of their efforts and what they have done so far through this process. For the Rec District staff, the Programs, Maintenance and Finance Departments, one, they have shown a lot of passion. They have a passion for providing opportunities to keep people healthy, providing those lifestyles and generate networks of lasting friendships, and then creativity. They don't have to stop having visions to find new ways to provide financial opportunities and ensure safety. And it's great to see them, even though we are missing something, still doing great things. We had a track meet last weekend. We had other organizations, four other recreation organizations that were there going, "You guys put on a meet. We all took notes. We're going to try to do it as well as you do." And that was wonderful to hear. And they just love the facility at the high school, so it was great. We have a great partnership with them. To the citizens tonight, I do hope to answer some questions that have arisen, but first, do want to say thank you to you as well for your continued belief in Canyon City and being passionate about our community. I have shared about the failed elections in the past with the public and after the last election. We were disappointed at the Rec District because we wholeheartedly believed in the project back in 2021. However, we adjusted, and our goal was to keep moving forward. You're going to find that that is going to be a theme as we look to keep moving forward, and we continue to listen and understand your frustration. We don't want to become an extra burden on families with taxes. We recognize that it is not going to be simple and basic. We have heard that you don't want it to impact local businesses. We understand that you also want it centrally located. We hear you loud and clear, but we understand that we are going to have to make choices as a community together if we're going to solve this issue with the pool. Tonight, we will share information about the Rec District and try to be creative in coming up with possible solutions. As I had listened and read comments, I've tried to embrace a quote recently that I heard from Walt Whitman, "Be curious, not judgmental." I think a lot of times, we forget that as a society. We are quick to make a judgment and make a statement without asking why and what is the solution. So I want all of us to be curious. And I know every common idea has a purpose and great intentions as I share the information with you. Hope you can embrace that quote, and we build something beautiful together to enhance our community. Just real quick, I think it is important to understand about the Rec District formed in '65. We do have property tax. We do not have sales tax. We do not get Rural-Gorge-Bridge and Park money. We have 115 square miles, and obviously, we serve, we're a larger service area than the city at 28,535, according to the state. So we are financially impacted by the state legislative actions. Obviously, Proposition HH is on the ballot. We have no idea of that impact. We will see where we go. But for a district our size, we are the lowest funded in the state. Just here alone, Canyon City Schools, you can see they're the highest funded district in our community, followed by Canyon City Fire Protection District, Fremont County, then the Rec District, and very close percentage points behind is the city of Canyon City. However, Rural-Gorge-Bridge and Park money was established to cover that property tax issue. That is something that we do not have. As far as how we compare with other communities, when we say we are the lowest funded Rec District in the state for a community our size, it's a fact. If you look at it per capita, so per person, if you take the money that we receive from the mill levy and divide that, it represents $33.63 a person. Elizabeth is the next closest at $40.76. I'll put our Rec District up against that any day of the week. But as you can see, as we look, we are behind other communities. Fair play, significantly higher. Strasburg, so fair play to South Park. Montrose is more than double. We have not funded recreation in this community very well. We haven't. And this graph flat out shows it. And so when you look at our finances, "Why can't you replace the pool?" There's your answer. We are not funded at a level where we could if we wanted to. We do not have that ability. We do have 12 full-time employees. We have a permanent part-time and a seasonal maintenance. As you can see, 113 part-time employees as well. And how does the district work? Well, we have 400 volunteers every year. We make it work. And we also get numerous grants and donations that must be used to complete any capital improvement project. And this is just an idea of the grant funding that we have. You can see GOCO's on the list, Gates Foundation, CPW, St. Thomas More. More recently, Noon Lions, Black Hills, Newmont Mine has been involved. But every facility we have exists because of either donations, grant funding, or in-kind work. Otherwise, we have a pool and maybe a section of Riverwalk, not even the whole thing. So we have done improvements at Pathfinder Park, Rouse Park. That was a $950,000 over the last decade that we have done to improve that facility. 22% of that came out of district budget. The rest, grants, in-kind donations. So do we go after grants aggressively? Yes, we do. We get grants every year. And that is how we make it work. We stretch every dollar we can. But as you can see, it's impacted Harrison Park, Harrison School Playground, Shep Open Space, the Dog Park, the Archery Range, Riverwalk Expansion, also planning grants, and we have program scholarships through St. Thomas More. So we are impacted in every department that we have through grant funding to make the mill levy that we receive and the funds that we receive work. We do have budgetary limitations. So we do not have a capital improvement fund. I mean, we do have a fund in the budget, but that's using lottery dollars. But there is no dedicated tax such as Brighton, rifle, Carbondale, just to name three communities, who literally have a tax that is for capital improvements of recreation. And that's what those funds are for. There are some for operations, but we have no capital fund in which to replace something like a pool. So none of the facilities on the previous slide would have capital improvements or even exist if not for the grants. So we've been very successful in our budgeting. We are in solid shape fiscally. However, we cannot take on any additional facilities. So if somebody came up and said, "We've got this great park for you. We've got a playground in it. We have trails. We're set. It's 10 acres." You take it on. We would look them dead in the eye and say, "Thank you so much. That is a generous offer. We will have to decline." Because we have no funding in which to maintain that facility. That is where we are at right now. We are capped out. However, we make it work with what we do have. Estimated 2,600 participants in 21 different youth programs. 1,300 adult sports participants over 13 programs. Special events, over 3,600 participants. That number most likely is higher because there are some things we are not able to track. And so you're looking at over 3,600 participants in special events. By the way, a lot of these are from out of town and impact our local economy. Aftermath, Turkey Bowl, Turkey Trot, two of the bigger ones, just to name those. But there is consistent community use within the Recreation District, whether it's through the use of facilities, fields for tournaments. The Riverwalk hosts numerous events. There are fundraisers out at Rouse. Canyon City High School uses it for girls' softball games. They have a bonfire around homecoming, meeting room rentals. There are a lot of things that are impacted. We can't tell you the exact number of this and just day-to-day use. But we do know that the Arkansas Riverwalk Trail is the most used trail in our community. And we take a lot of pride in that. And we make it work. Now, the one thing that we have to do is we have to talk about the Ichabon Pool. We saw the first big decline in attendance at the Ichabon Pool. It dropped like a rock in 2018 when the slide had to close in June of 2018. And we demoed that slide in 2019. Attendance never bounced back to where it was before the slide. And so when you take an amenity like that away, it has an impact. By the way, the slide lasted 27 years, had a life expectancy of 15. The pool, life expectancy of 25 to 30 years. It lasted for 57. I talked with Connor Riley of Councilman Huntsaker today. Point blank asked him, "Was there anything else we could have done? Is there something we could have changed to made it even an extra year?" His answer, "No. You did everything right to possibly do it." Carbondale is redoing their pool right now. Exact same program that we're looking at, and theirs went 44 years. We went 57. We did our job. But now we need help. And we have to replace the pool. And this is one of the concepts. So this is concept one. And again, I want to stress to anybody watching or anybody here, this is a concept. This is to start a conversation. This is not what we will do. This is what we can do. But feasibility will bear out what we need to do as a facility. Right now, it is an outdoor facility. What a feasibility tells us, it needs to be indoor. We don't know. But we have to start somewhere with the conversation. So the best thing to do is start with the existing site. That just seemed like the natural order of things. This facility, you will notice two bodies of water. You will also notice that there are a couple of slides. There is a larger building now that is along College. Obviously, there are no details worked out with the city on anything of road access or anything like that, but it's just a concept. You can see there's a drop-off lane, which we don't have currently. It's just get to the pool and park on side streets. Okay? We did not address parking. We did take the volleyball court. We did not take the basketball court. Up close, here's what a leisure pool looks like. You will see that it is zero entry. In this leisure pool, on the south side of it, as you go in, there is a play structure. Again, this is standard. This is not a water park. This is a standard, community pool for a community our size. This is what they build now. So we have to get out of the mindset of the old L shape that was built in the 50s and 60s. This is standard today. You will notice that there is a play area. There's a lazy river. You do have some spray components in here. You also have a underwater shelf that you can use, so there's moving water. Normally, the temperature of the leisure pool or recreational pool is going to be somewhere around 85, 86 degrees, somewhere in there. And so this is your warmer body of water. We did not include a spa with this at this time, which would be even a warmer body of water. We did not include anything like that. The term for it that they use is a spa pool. It's a smaller pool. A hot tub is more used on those lines, but we did not include anything like that at this time. But there is a, there are multiple play structures. There is a walk across inflatable bridge in the pool that's kind of in the middle, and zero entry as well as stair entry in and out of the pool. This is the lap pool component, but it's more than just a lap pool. When people hear that, "Oh, it's just a lap pool. You swim laps." No. You program it. There's a zip line feature. There is a diving board. There is a climbing wall. There's a basketball hoop. There is water volleyball. There are all kinds of options. You also have, you also have starting blocks. You have, you know, for lap swim, for swim teams, things like that. There is a slide component here. This is a double slide with a long, straight runout, so it's not actually going into a body of water. So it's a little different style than what we had in the past. You don't put slides into a main body. You have to isolate it somehow, which you will see on design two. But this is concept number one. There are some shade structures, and this is what it looks like. For design two, again, concept. So this is a different type of leisure pool, a little bit different size. You do have a slide that goes into a section of the leisure pool, but you will see all that's walled off. In this one, there is a college avenue is where the drop-off and everything is. Larger mechanical rooms, larger changing rooms. And yes, they will be covered unlike the current Ichabon Pool. Okay? So as far as the leisure pool goes, you can see that there is a spray, spray entry at the zero entry. You have zero entry depth, again, a play structure, but the play structure does go across the current channel, so the lazy river. You also have what's called a vortex in here. The deepest this water gets on either pool is 3 feet 6 inches. That's as deep as you will go in a recreational pool. And you will see that the water slide goes into its own little area to the north part of this pool. There are some shade structures again as well with this. So again, not a water park, just a current, standard, community pool. And then the lap component, basically identical to the other one, it just flipped its direction, but same sort of activities. The reason you have those activities is it creates use. The depth, by the way, of the lap pools is 12 feet 6 inches on the deep end. To meet code, you need to be 11/6. And we are at 10, by the way, at Ichabon Pool. We were going to have to most likely rip out the diving boards. So you need to be at at least 11/6 to be on the safe side, 12/6. And then in the shallow end, the deepest it gets is 4 feet. Okay? So those are the initial concepts with this. We have received a lot of questions about these concepts or what's going on, so I'm just going to try to answer these questions and move through it. So how much will the cost for the design be? Now, just the pools, the pool structures are $2.5 to $3 million. That's the pools. When you get everything else in, so we're talking demo, soft cost, design fees, building permits, anything you need in the bath house, the building itself, all that stuff, you are going to get to $10 to $11 million. Now, how do we know that that number is factual? Right now, the people that put this plan together, Councilman Huntsaker, they are working on the project in Carbondale. Carbondale set an $8 million, they did an $8 million Tabor question to ask to go into debt using their Recreation Capital Fund, and it was approved overwhelmingly. And they went at $8 million. They are having to scale back. Their lap pool is either going to be three lanes or four lanes. So they had to pull back, which means they can no longer hold swimming meets. So that is now out. So that's it, that's it, $8 million now. What they really needed was probably about nine. So if you look at inflation, and if you were looking at a 2025 build or something like that, you're going to probably need to get to $10 to $11 million. So that is looking at this. And this is for a standard pool. And by the way, we are a larger community than Carbondale. So keep that in mind. But it is an apples-to-apples comparison with what they are doing. Okay? Does the cost to replace the Ichabon Pool include demolition and site prep of the current structure? Yes, it does. That does include demo. I have heard an Olympic-sized pool can be constructed for $500,000. If that is the case, why is this pool so much more expensive? When Connor Riley answered that question for me, he chuckled a little, and there was a long pause. That number is not even close, not even remotely close. If you were doing a commercial-public pool that is Olympic size, the cost is well over $3 million. You are pushing 3 and 1/2, minimum. So an Olympic-sized pool is more than the two facilities we are looking at, just to be clear. Why are commercial-public pools so expensive now? Well, the commercial pool market is a niche market. And there are very few commercial pool builders out there. The equipment used is very expensive. The prices are inflated. Nine years ago, the price per square foot was $180 to $200 for a facility. That price now is $400 a square foot, minimum. So in nine years, the price has doubled or more than doubled. That is why these facilities are expensive. So yes, if we would have looked to build, we'd have had that magic crystal ball 10, 11 years ago. We're having a discussion about $6 million instead of 10 to 11. But that's just where we're at. They did anticipate, they did think that there was an opportunity based on materials, the number for the square foot in 2025. They anticipate somewhere between $375 and $450 per square feet. But they said it is hard to anticipate pool construction costs. They are, they move. And I think anybody in construction knows that that's the way it is now. So will this design serve a community our size? Yes, it will. It's a dedicated lap pool, has a leisure component, play features. This is a standard design for what is going on now. Again, I want to stress, this is not a water park. I've heard the comments. This is not a water park. This is a standard facility for now. Communities are switching to pools of this style, so it works for all demographics. It's not about just, "Oh, just put a facility and let the kids splash around. That's all they care about." We know that's not true. The slide is proof of that. We know that that's not a factual statement. And by the way, when you're looking at a facility like this, this can also help with, it can also help with potential therapy pool options, things like that. So it's just an option, because the lap pool component is around 78 degrees, at most 80. Normally, it's in the high 70s, whereas it's a warmer body of water in the recreational component. So why not just build a pool like we had? Pools are simply not constructed like that unless you're going strictly for a competition lap pool. If that's what you're going for, then that's what they'll design. But it is an antiquated design approach to go back to the 50s and 60s L shape. Technology and creativity has changed, and it creates more use and appreciation. The community will be happier. They will benefit from a better product, because it's not just about what we need now. It's about what we need 20 years from now, 30 years from now. So are any lap pools built like they were in the 50s? The lap pools do not change, as we mentioned. But leisure is the moneymaker, and you have to be flexible. Lap pools still have a need, but more importantly, you program it where you used to not. So you program it by adding features. Does the design meet current programming standards? Yes, it does. It's a standard design. This is not a Rolls-Royce. I can already hear the comments now. You're doing a Rolls-Royce design. No, it is not. This is just a nice, standard setup. What is the life expectancy? The design will last 50-plus years. The plan for replacement of some equipment, about every 10 years, which is why any tax we do, we're going to need to factor in some sort of capital reserve with it if that is the direction we go. But there needs to be some sort of capital reserve with it, because we need to be thinking down the road, where are we going to be 30, 40 years from now? Again, it's a 50-plus-year design. Okay? A backyard pool builder normally will have a structure that lasts, on average, 20 years if they were getting the use that a commercial-public pool would. So you have 2 and 1/2 times difference in use. That's why you really need to look at a commercial pool build. This question did catch Connor off-guard. Why can't the community simply build a pool with the businesses we have in town? After a, I wish I was exaggerating, 15-second pause, he said that is simply something that you cannot do. The reason is, you are juggling somewhere around 10 different codes. For a backyard pool, you have one. For a commercial-public pool, you're looking at a minimum of 10, such as Virginia Graham Baker, ADA, National Electric Code, ASTM Codes, which is American Society for Testing Materials, Model Aquatic Health Code, Colorado Pool Code, building codes, plumbing codes, fire codes for chemical storage, ACI codes. We have to meet all of those. And it is threading the needle, because those codes don't always play nice. A lot of times, there is a conflict with ADA, such as slope and what you're doing with that slope on a pool deck. And you're having to thread that code, and a lot of times, according to the builders we're talking to, you have to talk with health department, with the state, and try to figure out what is the best way to manage that. So it's constantly threading the needle. And the reality is, the only people that understand how to do that are commercial pool builders, period. Now, there are some things that local businesses can do, which we can get to later, but there probably are some things that we can do, such as demolition. So there are some options there, but we can address that a little later. How much more expensive would a year-round facility be? So there are a couple of options. You can do the resort style, which if you go to a resort in the mountains, you know they have heated outdoor pools while the snow's coming down in the winter. You know what happens. And a heater could be upsized and have a year-round facility. That's your, that's your cheapest option. Probably not going to give you many options as far as a swim team goes, like a high school swim team or something along those lines, but it is an option. You are looking at potential enclosures that could add expense. You're looking $500,000 and up, but that probably doesn't include your HVAC. That's going to be for the material, because you can use a shell or a bubble added. There are 15 different types of enclosures you can use, according to Connor. You've got about 15 different options. So we'd have to weigh what is the best one for the community, but it's on the table. Again, feasibility will play this out. No decisions have been made. The community will get the say on this thing. And we just want to stress that. We did get a couple of other questions recently. Why can't we just repair the current pool with gunite? So it's basically shot concrete. One, it's going to add 8 inches to 1 foot of depth, so you've got a 3-foot end. Swim team, by the way, technically, for swim meets to operate, you need to be 3/6 in the shallow end. We no longer can then operate. Technically, you're now close to 4 feet where the kids are diving into the pool. You're outside of code there as well. You now are down to 9 feet, about that in the deep end. All diving boards are done. So you've taken everything out in order to do that. And by the way, that solves potentially, but then there are gutter issues, skimmer issues, water return issues, everything else. But the other thing to remember is that deals with one issue. We have over a dozen. It doesn't address anything else. You're playing whack-a-mole, and the funds are not there to take every issue one by one, nor can they be taken one by one. So are there repair options? Unfortunately, no. We have met with three different companies. We have met with Travis Stensby of Terricon, Josh Benz with Associated Pool Builders, who, by the way, according to the pool companies we talked with, is considered, if not the best pool builder in the Rocky Mountain region, he might be in the nation, and he's in Loveland. He's that good. He personally has looked at our pool. And by the way, in December 31st of 2019, he looked at our pool as we had other concerns pop up. Travis wasn't available. Travis wasn't available to meet with us. So he drove down for Loveland on New Year's Eve, met with us and said, "At most, you have three years." Guess how many years we got? Three. He literally nailed it. Yeah, I would say he knows what he's doing. Um, and the other one, um, that I want to mention is, uh, Connor Riley, who we're working with. We also talked with Kyle McCauley of Lamp Ryerson. We've had multiple engineers look at this thing. We have talked with multiple engineers, we have talked with repair companies, we have done everything we can to try to extend the life of this facility. We are out of time. It's done. I don't say that, um, like it doesn't hurt. I can tell you that it was an emotional board meeting when we closed the facility. We don't want to, but it is a safety issue. And we can't find an engineer that says, "Oh, it's a good idea." We have the leading experts in the field are telling us, "Uh-uh. It's not about what we want, it's about what has to happen in this situation. Now we have to fix the problem." So now it's up to us. I want to close with, um, one other thing. I mentioned earlier, we need to keep moving forward. The Rec District, within its first year of operation, everybody's been saying, "You needed to start with a pool." You know, you started with a pool, that was the purpose of it, that was it. Well then, how come in the first year, they were looking at adding parks, taking over athletic programs? There's a gentleman in this room that can even speak to that. Uh, Tim Payne was part of that, as a kid. And they were looking for parks, they were looking to get an ice rink. Within the first year, it was never just about a pool. It was about recreation and moving the community forward. Us focusing only on the pool and forgetting everything else that we do is going backwards. We have to move forward as a community. Um, I'm into Ted Lasso, I will tell you this, I, I think it's great. Life is a journey that sometimes feels like a never-ending roller coaster ride. There are ups and downs, twists and turns, highs and lows, but amidst all the chaos, we often encounter things that help us move forward in our quest for a better life. Whether it's a job opportunity or a new relationship, these things come into our lives for a reason. These opportunities may not always be obvious at first glance. Sometimes they appear as challenges or setbacks that force us to reevaluate our priorities and make necessary changes. Other times, they come as unexpected surprises that uplift our spirits and give us hope for the future. Regardless of how they manifest themselves, these moments are catalysts for growth and transformation. In retrospect, we can see how each experience has led us closer to where we need to be in life. It's time for us to move forward as a community. That's, uh, our presentation. I'm happy to answer questions and go from there.
Thank you, Kyle, I really appreciate that. Sorry, thorough and answered a lot of questions that I've been, um, wondering or have had people ask me, so I really appreciate having that, um, that deeper dig. And can the City Council be provided a copy of that?
Of, of this presentation? Uh, you actually already have it on a computer back here, you're good to go.
Oh, okay.
You're set, it's yours.
We'll, we'll make sure to get that out to everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Ryan, do you have, I know you have some things that you had hoped to be able to add about ways the city could potentially maybe partner or help make this become a reality?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, before we get to that, I, I think, Kyle, I, you, you might want to talk about next steps and, and where we're at, you know, assuming there aren't any other questions from, from council members before we get there, or, or the Rec District Board. But I, I, I think, you know, we're, what I heard at the board meeting, uh, last Tuesday is, you know, you're, you're kind of heading in the direction of a feasibility study, um, trying to understand where, uh, what, what's the facility look like, uh, do you build it in the same location? Is, is they pool, you know, replacing the pool enough? Uh, there, there were a lot of questions that came out of that meeting, I, maybe, you know, you want to talk a little bit about that?
So, I'll, I'll let the board have a moment here, be able to jump in here in a moment, but I will say that, uh, the board did authorize us to look at an RFP. We, we want to make sure that in that request for proposals, uh, for feasibility, that, that we iron out where the community truly lands. Because at that last meeting, I, I can honestly say, I, I have no idea where the community wants to go. There were three, four different suggestions made by multiple people. And, and so we don't know where that's at yet. So feasibility study is going to have to be done, that survey work, that's going to get us a pro forma, so how much is it going to cost to run a facility? I do want to remind everyone, commercial-public pools do not make money. They do not finish in the black. They're a service, they are subsidized. YMCA operates multiple pools in Colorado Springs. The subsidy at the end of the day works out to about six hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars. When you factor in labor and everything else from what Colorado Springs gives them, because the City of Colorado Springs provides all the maintenance, all the repairs, but they get none of the revenue. YMCA provides programming and gets the revenue. Okay? Not saying it's a bad deal, just saying that's reality. Um, City of Pueblo subsidizes their four pools, somewhere in the neighborhood of around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We were subsidizing fifty, twenty from the general fund, thirty from conservation trust funds. So, we need to figure out where that pro forma is going to land. And obviously, the pro forma moves based on where the community lands, on a seasonal outdoor or something year-round, because the subsidies are drastically different. It's not even close. So we have to be mindful of that. Um, because it's fifty thousand for a three-month use, so it's significant. So feasibility will have to lay this out. But the board did authorize us to look for feasibility. Um, Nick, I don't know if you want to go from there and talk about what the board is going to be looking for out of that, or what they want to know from the community?
Sure. I mean, what, what we really want to know, like a lot of what Kyle was saying, is exactly what, what the community wants. Um, after the last go-around with the Rec Center, um, and all the effort, and, you know, you, you learn a lot along the way. And I think that, at that time, we were listening to the community as well, but if anything, that really just hits home that we have to take this feasibility study very serious. Um, and in doing that, you know, putting out an RFP to look at different companies, I think is very important, um, to get the outcome that we want. So, anyway, we've, we've authorized Kyle to put together an RFP to put out there, so we could at least begin the conversation of how much this is going to cost. Um, these aren't very cheap, but they are very helpful, so. Anybody else wants to jump in?
I'll just say, from the meeting at the school and the meeting at the pool, the open house, there's two things I think the community is most worried about, and that's cost and location. Cost and location, we keep hearing cost and location. And everyone has it in their mind of what it's going to cost and where it should be located. I think if we figure those two things out, obviously, that's going to move the ball faster. But also, we need to, we need to find a way to inform the community with the facts rather than everybody else's opinion. Um, so, you know, I don't know how we do this, Kyle, as far as, I like the Carbondale, but we need to look at other communities, how much their pool costs, what their pool looks like, and give the community an idea, if you spend this much money, this is what it's going to look like. If you spend this much money, this is what it's going to look like. Because it's all about informing people. And right now, everyone just has their own opinion, and there is no, we're, you know, and we're not there yet, right? That's the plan, is to inform these people exactly, this is exactly what it will look like if we pay this much for it. What would you like for the next fifty, sixty years as a community? Um, so location, cost, and informing, education is, in my mind, what we need to start getting in front of people sooner rather than later. And this isn't going to be right away, right? We can't do anything for a while now, as far as, you know, if you want to talk about next year, things like that, or even if we get that far, I don't know. Feasibility, we'd like to start as soon as possible. So the question is, is how quick we get. Um, in this situation, I think about three weeks would probably be about standard to get a proposal back for this. There are several companies in the state that would most likely put in. Uh, so we're going to get an idea of what's going on, and they're going to be leading the public process, uh, similar to what you all go through when you're doing these studies as well. There's, there's no difference. And so we're going to wait and see what happens and see where the proposals come back. We do expect the feasibility to land somewhere, if you were looking conservatively, it's going to be a wide range, but twenty-five to sixty thousand dollars, I think is where it's probably going to land, somewhere in that, in that zone. I, I, I don't want to tell everybody, "Oh, it's definitely going to be under forty." We, we don't know that. And what's going to drive that is, if they have to do that year-round component, that's going to change what that looks like, so therefore, that price is going to jump up. Uh, the last thing I, I want to say is just that, there's a lot of people that are just talking and nobody is showing up, right? We need people to show up, but nobody shows up. They just want to talk behind the scenes, they don't want to come to anything, they don't want to come to the, you know. We tried to make it as transparent as we could, went to the open house on, on Sunday, nobody came. Um, I know the Citizens for a Pool, you guys are doing what you can, but we're gonna, the community's gonna have to step up and tell us what they want. Because if they don't, then we're just going to be going around in circles like we are now. Uh, I don't know what else to say on that front of it, but if people truly want to be in this community long-term, then they need to step up like all of us here now.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Just go ahead and speak up, yeah, we'll keep it casual.
I'm sure we'll have lots of discussion. I, uh, some, what occurs to me is, I, I'd like to hear, well, two things I'll say. I'd like to hear a little bit more about what is going to be in the RFP, what that's going to look like. And then, based on what Andy was just saying, I, it reminds me, years ago, when I, um, first served on City Council back in the eighties and early nineties, I, I learned fairly quickly that elected officials have a responsibility to both lead and follow. And when it comes down to it, those of us up here, and Amy, and, and people who aren't perhaps here, uh, we do want to know what the best solution is for the community, but on the other hand, and on the other hand, we'll be making decisions. The Rec District Board will make decisions, the city will make decisions about what ways we can or can't participate. So I, I think, it's very tough sometimes to figure out what is that absolute ideal solution that everyone in the community will say yes to. It's just, that's not going to happen. But we certainly want a process that comes as close as possible to that. And, and I would like to, I'll be quiet, I just want to say, I do want to hear more discussion about, uh, summer pool versus a year-round facility and kind of what some folks are thinking on that.
One thing I would like to say is that I appreciate the fact that you unfortunately had to go through the election of 2021 to where you had gotten every indication from the community that the Rec Center was one heck of a great idea. And then there was a ballot, and it didn't, it was shot down. And I can always remember, part of my marketing background is the fact that you can have all the focus groups in the world, until you ask them, "How much are you willing to pay for it?" You know, you can say, "Gee, this is a fabulous product, but how much are you willing to pay for it?" And that, of course, is what you're getting at with what a lot of your comments. Part of the, is too, is to make sure that the community as a whole, and you're never going to convince, you just hope you get fifty-one percent of them, in a sense, is they need to understand why we as a community need a pool. Whether it's outdoor, or twenty-four-seven, or twelve months a year, or whatever, they need to understand why it is so important as a community growth product to have a pool. And I'll try and shut up now. And I want to, I appreciate your, um, dedication to this, and I love the emotion you put into it, because obviously, you're eating and drinking and sleeping this every day right now. And so I appreciate your, uh, positivities, but also your reality to it, too. So thank you.
I think, I, I've witnessed Kyle on the board eating and drinking and sleeping this for a couple of years now. Been part of the process when it went to the last ballot, um, issue last year. And the city was a part of that RFP process then, too. We helped finance that, we were invested in wanting to participate in getting the best-case scenario for a positive vote. Um, I do remember going to several of those focus groups, and there were a lot of people that did say, "Why can't we keep it where it is? We want our kids to be able to ride their bikes there, the school kids to be able to walk to go get swimming lessons maybe during school." So I like the idea that you're, um, looking at keeping it where, at the same location. I think that'll be well-received. Um, but do you have a question about keep, the decision to keep the basketball court? And if there would be a value if you needed more space if we moved a basketball court to the city park across the street?
So a couple of things on that. One, uh, we, we told Councilman Huntsaker if they needed it, they could, they could take the basketball court. We, we said that. They go, "We didn't need it. We were able to make it work with the volleyball court." Now, it does leave up a couple of options. Is there a potential that there could be a small parking solution? Not a large one, but a small one. Potentially, that's on the table. Based on feasibility, if you're looking at something that's more year-round, does that mean that, um, does that mean that, that you'd need now to go into the basketball court? Possibly. Um, obviously, we have facilities, there are some grants out there, we are looking, we are currently exploring. There is a grant possibility to replace that basketball court, put it in another facility where there is one, but significantly upgraded. Um, and that's at Harrison Park. There are some, there are some things that we're looking at. I don't really want to get too deep into the weeds yet, but it's something that we found out about in April. So it's kind of, if we had to take the basketball court, okay, so we took something, what can we replace it with? And we may have a solution.
Okay.
But, but again, I don't want to get too deep into those weeds right now, it's still early as far as the process goes. But, um, I think what we need to understand is that all options are on the table. We know the amount of land that we own in that area. We understand what the school district is looking to do, or at least an idea from Ryan and I talking with them. So we don't exactly know where everything's going to play out, but we will have a better understanding as we move through the feasibility process and as we move later in the year. A lot of these things will probably bear out during this feasibility issue.
Okay. And, and obviously, I can't make any promises, but I do remember during those discussions, there were some things where, um, Red Park is underutilized in many ways, and maybe there's some options, if we need some give and take, that maybe Red Park might be able to provide something that's needed if you have to take away something, just, just to lay that on the table. If we're, if we're going to be talking and laying all kinds of things on the table, then we can do that.
And I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The, I have a, I have a small question and a much larger question. My small question is, uh, you know, about the design of the current pool that we've got. We do have a waiting pool for the, for the toddlers, uh, and that waiting pool design, I think, is, is kind of a good one, because it isolates the younger, the, the under-five crowd, uh, if we want to call it that, um, in an area where they can, where they can be really closely watched by parents or whoever's bringing them to the pool. Uh, and, and my concern is, is in, in the designs that I've seen, that there's not really a way to isolate the little kids from the big kids in those pools. Is that, do I understand that right, or how is, how, how is that handled?
That's actually not really an issue with this design. Um, what they've found is that, for the most part, the young kids and moms and dads, aunts, uncles, whoever, hang out in that real early zero entry area, and the kids a lot of times sit there play, but most of the time, the bigger kids work their way into other areas, such as the slide, uh, such as the play features that are in the three-foot-six, uh, three-feet-six-inch deep water, uh, and they work their way into that lap pool component. So that's normally not an issue. The other thing is, uh, for ADA, a waiting pool can no longer have a setup like it is now. You have to have zero entry. So there would be really no point in having two different zero-entry bodies of water. So what they have found in these community pools, it serves multiple uses, and there have not been issues, uh, such as the little kids being mixed in. Normally, when you go to a pool like this, you will see the little kids in one area, and as you move along, the bigger kids move to other areas. It's just, it's just like on- It's just, it's just like on a playground. There's a two-to-five playground, and there's a five-to-twelve-year-old playground. You will find that somehow the kids figure it out on their own, and they mix in, and you don't have any issues. So, it's, it's kind of the same premise.
Are there, are there, that's, so I've got actually three questions now, so.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna train in on that particular one, too. If you go to the Florence pool, when their voters actually approved to make enhancements at their pool, and they did a zero-entry, and it's really well-received, and you can witness exactly what Kyle has said, that the kids naturally separate themselves. And a lot of parents chose to actually move their activities to the first pool because they preferred that setup. And as a parent of little kiddos, lots of little kiddos, I actually was incredibly frustrated to have to just be in that fenced-in little place for little kids because I still had older kids that needed adult supervision as well, and I couldn't provide that.
They didn't want adult supervision, Ashley, that was all good.
They really needed it. And still do.
They may not get a vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that takes up my little question. My big question is, what, what do you, you know, the, the, we, it's kind of a chicken-and-the-egg problem because, because you, to design something, you gotta know what your budget is. And to know what your budget is, you have to know the mind of the voters, which is, which is pretty opaque sometimes, and not transparent or easily discernible. So, what, what do you, what, to you, what does the feasibility study mean? The, when I hear that, I'm concerned that, that, that what I'm hearing is, well, we're gonna, we've got, we've got this much budget, and so this is what we're gonna, what we're gonna design to. And so, what, what does, and, and that, that concerns me because then that kind of presupposes the answer that we're trying to get to, is what is it that we're going to have? And if you, if you start with that in mind, then it's like you haven't gone through the process. So, to you, what does the feasibility study mean, or what will it entail?
It will entail survey work, focus groups, professionally-led public meetings, trying to get an idea of where the community is at and what they want, whether it's year-round, seasonal, where they want to land. There is no assumption of a budget at this point. What we can do is say, if you want a seasonal outdoor, this is going to be your cost. It's gonna be about this. We know it's gonna be about ten to eleven. We, we know that. If you go year-round, what is that number going to land at? We, we don't know yet. What if it's, what if it's something else? What if the community comes back and goes, no, no, we want a rec center? I'm not saying that's what they're going to do, but we've already heard those comments at the meeting a week ago. That already happened. We're already hearing that. Do they want something scaled back, like a pool and a, and a fieldhouse? Like, fieldhouse that was done recently in Fort Morgan? I, I don't know. So, I think that we can honestly say, we're not going in with any assumptions. We want to see where the public wants to go. It's not about what the Rec District wants, it's about what the public wants. We've, and then how much they are willing to pay, because there will be price tags with everything. We know the Rec Center, a scaled-down Rec Center, and it was scaled down. Community may not realize that, but it was scaled down, was thirty million dollars. That was then. It's, it's more now. Grand Junction just passed theirs. It's, it's gonna be some, I, I'm not sure, I want to say it's over ninety thousand square feet. Seventy-two million dollars. The price of Rec Centers are going up. I'm not saying that's where we need to go, but I think all options have to be on the table because that's the expectation of the community. If we were doing it any other way, we'd be making an assumption, and that is wrong in this situation. So we have to listen. It's going to take us several months to get through this. But if we work together, we can get there.
I have a comment. I really appreciate you all coming here tonight, so we can all talk this through together and come up with some ideas. But I think, start with, if you think, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? I would encourage you to look back to the election in 2021. Find out from the recorder, what was the percent of eligible voters who voted? Find out which parts, which people, which, because they can tell, they have that information.
We already have those numbers.
So if you have those, okay.
We actually have the last four elections.
Right. And so when you're reaching out to people about what they want, you might include that question. Did you vote? If you did, why, did, why did you support us or not support us? Maybe, you know, and then, when you're in an election, when you're in a camp, you decide eventually down the road, you know what the, you know, your customers want, and you start thinking about that, and you're, you're gonna put something, you know, an issue on, on the ballot. I can tell you, I've done a lot of political work in my time, and getting people out to vote is the hardest part. But that's what wins any election, is, you know, figuring out who those people are, where they are, and what, what do they want? What is it, what will it take to get you? If you voted no, what does it take to get you to yes? That, and, and if you didn't vote, was there a reason? Is there some way I can help you to vote and get you, we'll come and get you and take, you know, we have volunteers who could pick people up, you know, if they're elderly and they don't have a way, or if they don't want to, you know, mail their ballots in. There's all kinds of, but, but that's, that's the key, is who didn't vote? And the people who did vote, you know, why, or why, why did they vote no? If they, you know, if they, if they were against it. And I'm sure you're gonna run up against people who will tell you that.
Magellan Strategies has provided that data for us. So they've already broken it down. So, the board, the board actually already has that information in front of them, and, and they're ready to, to look at that. We're happy to, happy to share it, if that's what you want.
You know, I'd be, I'd be happy to, I wouldn't mind helping, you know, your, you know, your citizens group or even you, if you need someone to make phone calls or talk to people. Because that's, that's the bottom line, is we need to get to those citizens and figure out what is it they want? And, and try to find out, just getting them out to vote, that's the hardest part. Thanks.
And one of the things that we'll, we'll be looking at is the fact that this will be a November 2024 election.
Everyone will be out anyway.
Presidential year. The turnout, the body of voters, the body of the electorate will look very different than, than it did in 2021.
Right, that, that would probably work in your favor.
Well, that's an assumption, and I think it's a good, it's a good assumption. It's a good assumption that more voters help us, but that's, I think, one of those things that we would be looking at in the feasibility.
Yeah, I know, the turnout overall was pretty low in 2021. I do know that because I ran that year for council. It was, it was very low. Anyways, just, just a thought, thanks.
I'm gonna say, excuse me for being late today, but traffic, traffic played a little issue coming down from Netherlands. But, you know, I look back at, at this whole election, and, and, you know, I went into it, Kyle and I, you know, you and I had talked a lot about this. I had gone to a lot of meetings when that was going on, as a council member. And I had talked to a lot of people as well, very strong. I guess the people I talked to, the majority of, said, absolutely, we need this Rec Center, we need this Rec Center, we need this Rec Center. Then you see the vote, then you ask them why. And the number one thing I got from everybody is, I didn't want my taxes raised. Number one. And even from people who, this might be a wrong assumption, that you look at them, you look at their lifestyles, and you say, this, you could do this. And, and I think that's where everybody needs to also look at because this is not a government thing, just to say, hey, we're gonna get a pool and fund this. This is a community effort, and that's, that's the number one thing that everybody has to learn. If you don't want to pay that extra tax, you know, sometimes you just have to suck it up and say, what's the best for your community, whether it's good or bad? But not everybody's gonna agree with the new pool, Rec Center, whatever we go with. But they also better start thinking about what's best for the community as a whole, to keep our community growing and strong. And definitely having a pool and Rec Center is so important to any community in our state. And I think that's something that everybody needs to really take a look at and go, do we want to see Canyon start falling back? Because it will. If we do not start doing some things for our youth, for, for everybody. Everybody says this is for the youth. No, it's not for the youth. It's for everybody in our community. It doesn't matter what age. Every age will be using a new pool, a new Rec Center, whatever we have. But I think that is one thing that everybody has to look at, is where do they want their community to be? Not just do they want this, where do they want their whole community to be?
Well, I'll piggyback with you, Councilmember Dennehy, that this isn't a, it wouldn't be a tax to go into this oblivion of a general fund. It's for a specific project, for a specific place, for a specific thing that's only to operate a pool that benefits people of all ages. I think we might be preaching to the choir on that. There's a lot of work to be done, but Kyle did admonish us to get a little bit curious, and I am a little bit curious about something. And you had mentioned how there are some communities where the municipalities help pay for the operating costs because it, it isn't going to be self-sustaining. And Ryan, I'm curious, have there been conversations, and what are the possibilities? Are there, would the community support this better if they knew that if the city was gonna commit X amount of money so that taxes didn't have to be raised as much? That we are investing, you know, we're fi, we're making cuts somewhere else so that we can make this pool a possibility? Or just what, what possibilities? Let's dig into that.
Yeah, I, I think some of those questions, you know, may be some, you know, questions we need to ask in the survey work to see what kind of support they have. I think there are questions about, you know, if it's not a property tax, is the city willing to run a sales tax initiative? You know, if, if the city runs a sales tax initiative, do we pass it through to the Rec District directly? Or does the city go through the RFP process, build the pool, and do a leaseback to the, to the Rec District? There, there are any number of things that we could do and consider at this stage. Kyle and I have, you know, we've met a couple of times, and we've, we've been talking about this for a while. You know, right now, we're, you know, it's the brainstorming, brainstorming stage. You know, we've tried to take, you know, there, there's nothing off the table. How, how, you know, how do you get this done? And, you know, that, that's the approach that we're taking.
Did you punch any numbers on what a sales tax would increase would be to?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, depending on what the ask is, you know, what, what is the programming? What's the cost gonna be? A quarter percent sales tax generates about one-point-two-five million dollars. You could probably run a quarter percent sales tax for fifteen years and fund a program that you saw in Concept One and Two.
And that, would that be just to build the facility?
That would be to build the facility. I, I know, you know, the Rec District is, is looking at additional mills for, for operation, just in general, and that may be, you know, something Kyle or the board want to talk about.
So, we, we don't, no decisions have been made on our end where we're at. We do know that we need help. We have former board members that have been vocal about that. Again, one in this room. We, we need, we do need help for what we do. Forget about the pool itself, but what we do now. So, we, we don't know where that's going to land. Now, at the same time, that can come out in feasibility as well. We don't want to assume where the voters are gonna land, but, but obviously, you're going to need to do two things if there's a construction bond question. One is to pay off that bond, but the second is to build some sort of capital reserve to address needs as the pool goes along. Because at the ten-year mark, you're gonna be looking at replacing something somewhere. And you're going to need to start looking at that. And if there's no fund set up that, then you're doing a disservice to the project. So, there are a lot of things that we need to play, and I don't know where the board's at and what their thoughts are, and what Ryan said about sales tax, so.
I think we'd be, we'd be welcome to any help, obviously. Any help would be, would be great. Based on that great slideshow that you put together, Kyle, I think it's pretty easy to see that we are very much underfunded. And I feel like our Recreation District does a great job. I think on one of those slides, I saw that for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home, seventy-eight dollars comes to us for, through taxes. Is that about right, Kyle? Something like that?
Yeah, it works out to about six dollars and ten cents a month.
Yeah. And I don't know about you guys, but, I mean, I've been on that Riverwalk a lot this year, so I'm getting a heck of a deal. But I work with a lot of investors that have a hard time, good investors, bad investors. And what I see with successful people is they have the sight and the vision. And they know there's gonna be some bumps up front, they know it's not gonna be easy. But I think if we could get to the point where we can get, get to give our community a good pool, something quality, it's only gonna help everybody and our city in the future, all the way around. Economically, and our kids, our children, and, I don't know. One of the hardest things I have to tell people as I'm meeting new people coming into our town, showing them houses, is that we don't have a swimming pool.
Well, yeah, it's not just people, but I've met with developers. We have a ma, a huge shortage of housing in Canyon City. We have developers who are willing to come in, possibly to put in, you know, hundreds of units. And they'll say, but where's the pool? Like, I don't want, I can't sell houses here if there's not a pool.
I see eyeballs like this.
Yeah.
Just to add.
I think Cooper would, oh, yeah, go ahead and add, and then Cooper's next to mine.
Go ahead.
Oh, I did, wanted to say a couple of things quickly. I think, whether it's through the feasibility study, through our discussion, through whatever, I, I think it really is tough to figure out a way to determine, are we, you know, what's the best approach, a seasonal pool or a year-round facility? And part of that is, yeah, it's cheaper to buy, or to, to build a summer pool, relatively speaking, but there's such a loss, in a sense, if you only have three months of use. So it's just, that issue, I think, has to be on the table all the time. And I did want to ask Ryan to respond to, if I'm remembering the city charter correctly, if, if the city had, well, maybe you can say it better than I can, where the line is, if the city were gonna participate in some way financially. I believe our charter requires a vote of the people of Canyon City, but you can say better where that line is.
Right, yes, so it, it's a Tabor question regardless. So, you know, if it's a sales tax issue, it's still gonna be a vote of the people, absolutely.
And a pool itself, I think, is, I forget how that's worded. When we changed the charter, or asked the voters to change it, I should say.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that.
Pool in there as a, to be voted on, so.
I think that could all probably be rolled into one question.
That's kind of like with the schools, when they asked to build the new middle school in Washington Elementary, they already had some thumbs in, and so it might be helpful that the city could dedicate some.
Ashley, can I say a couple of things?
Absolutely.
One thing I think, I mean, with the recent assessments of properties kind of skyrocketing and all of the open wounds with property owners in Fremont County, I think timing is such that I'm leaning towards going the, or, or encouraging people to vote for the sales tax measure. One, because that impacts everybody who's purchasing any, any goods in Fremont County, not just the property owners. And, and two, I mean, we look right next door in Florence, and that's what they passed, and it, it obviously worked. And, I mean, you look at other communities, and you travel up to a, a resort in the mountains, and you purchase something, you're not looking at your receipt, and you're not gonna notice that quarter of a percent increase in your sales tax. So I guess that would be the avenue that I would encourage people to look at. So I'm interested in hearing more from Ryan on that. Another thing that I wanted to mention was a lot of, of people want a year-round aquatic center. And in order to do that, I guess our, our three options that we're probably looking at would be an outdoor pool, an indoor year-round aquatic center, and a rec center. And in talking with Ryan and Kyle, I mean, the most expensive to maintain year-round would, would be the indoor aquatic center. So something to consider moving forward, that, that the subsidies, whether it be from the city or, or whatever avenue we end up going, the year-round maintenance and the, the fund that we're gonna have to build to maintain that would be the highest for the indoor aquatic center.
Yeah, I, I guess, just one clarification, it, it would be sales tax within the city limits, not Fremont County, so.
We, we have a county commissioner here. How good, how much does the county want a pool?
But, yeah, to, to. To your point, though, and, and Kyle mentioned this during the initial presentation. He, he mentioned, you know, having that, you know, two bodies of water and the mentioned, you know, having that, you know, two bodies of water and the need to make money. You know, the need to make money is not to make a profit, it's to, it's for cost recovery. The less cost recovery you have, the more of a burden it creates for the taxpayers from a subsidy standpoint. So, you know, those were the considerations that we had in 2021. I think they will continue to be considerations until a final determination is made.
And we have several people in the audience. Would anyone like to address the council here? Please, come on up.
The mic is on. It is on. Tim Payne, I think most of you probably know me. I did a stint with the county. And I'm a recovering county commissioner, but I've spent 19 years, I'm starting my 20th year, in special districts. I'm batting 750 on tax questions, have won three and lost one. So, Councilman Stein is very correct that it depends on what you're asking. I think a quarter cent sales tax that sunsets, people love that word sunset on a sales tax. They love that. And so, I think that's a very viable option to do that. Oh, and by the way, it warms my old public servant soul to see agencies coming together to try to solve a problem. We've done it a couple of times, Pathfinder Regional Park, South Canyon Trails, that comes to mind. We actually, it can be done. I said in a public meeting that the rec district got to get out of the pool business. But that's with the current mill levy. It's imperative that mill levy increases. Even without a pool, that mill levy needs to increase. I said that 15 years ago when I sat in Nick's Arctory seat. There's just so underfunded, there are some of the lowest salaried people. So, that's imperative, not only to get the quarter cent sales tax, but that mill levy increase needs to happen too. So, you got two separate questions. So, what happens if the quarter cent sales tax passes, the mill levy doesn't? Now, you got a problem. Because your operations, yeah, you can build a pool, but then your operations, you have a problem. So, this is going to have to be very carefully worded. I'm all in favor for it. My grandkids need a place to swim. And so, with that, I'd like to do what my parents did in 1965. Let's vote us in a pool. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? We have a, is there a little, is there a little person who would like to address the city council? Yeah, come on up.
I think-
So, tell us your name.
Finian.
Hi, Finian.
Hi, Ashley. I think a pool-
Go ahead. What do you think?
I think a pool would be good because all me and my friends want to get a pool in town because, well, it's always just fun to go hang out with your friends at the pool. Here's all kinds of stuff you can do there. And I think we should get a pool.
I think so. I love, you know, when I go to the pool with my kids, one of the best things is to see all of the happy kids with big smiles on their face, getting good exercise, fresh air, and they're supervised.
Yeah.
All of that's really good during the summer.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you, Finian. That takes a lot of courage to come up here.
Mayor Smith, we do have representatives from citizens with a pool, and they do have some frequently asked questions that they've been receiving. And if it's okay, I think, you know, give them an opportunity to ask some questions.
Sure.
Thank you. Just to let everyone know, speaking of kids, my kiddo made it to the championship baseball. He plays with rec district baseball, and his game is at eight o'clock. So-
Oh, we need to get him to the phone.
If we're not done talking, I'm going to excuse myself, and Diana's going to take over because I need to go be a mom and scream and cheer him on. So, yeah, like Ryan said, we have taken some direct questions from our page, as well as from our conversations with our fellow citizens. And one of our goals of our group is to make sure our citizens' voices are heard. So, we appreciate you guys allowing us to have a seat at the big table and allowing us this opportunity. So, has the community looked at the YMCA? If so, why isn't that an option for the community?
Kyle, I think you're the most informed.
Okay.
I remember we had conversations with the YMCA.
There have been numerous. So, the YMCA did conduct a feasibility study back in the late 90s. They looked at potential facilities in 2009, getting 17 and 18. We can tell you that when they did do a feasibility study, it didn't pass the YMCA feasibility study. You're looking at a fee-based organization. And so, when they do a feasibility study completely different than the questions that would be asked of a governmental agency, a municipality, or a special district. So, it's a, it's a different component. But it didn't pass at that time. As to why the YMCA is or is not involved in any efforts, of course, that's primarily a question for them to answer. But I do want to mention the district does offer a multitude of facilities, as well as programming for the community. They've done so since 1965. During that time, the YMCA has not had a presence in our community. They did before that, but they left years before that time. We are established and offer programs at affordable levels. We're trying to be fiscally responsible, based on audit reports. Over the last several decades and participation numbers in all of our programs and at our facilities, we're accomplishing that goal. We're meeting the needs. So, with the YMCA, you're looking at duplicating services that are already in existence. Now, on top of that, the YMCA is a great organization. I'm not going to question that at all. They do a great job. But for the most part, in Colorado, you will not find them in rural communities. The reason for that is the municipalities and the special districts have taken on that role and offered that up. So, they have been providing those services. The YMCA, they're a program-based organization focused on health and wellness of communities, youth development, healthy living, and socially, and social funded, and social responsibility. However, when they go into communities where a municipality or a special district operates, what happens is the municipality, the special district funds that program. So, there's normally a tax question passed. Is there a capital campaign project on their end? Sometimes yes, sometimes no. It depends on the situation. But in our, but in this case, you're looking at, they would be looking for us to pass a question, then they would come in and operate it. But at the same time, while they're doing that, there's going to be a franchise fee. Sometimes there's a management fee. And on top of that, you have to make sure that they, there's normally a contract. They range between 16 and 80 pages. And within that contract, they put in there that you need to make sure that they finish in the black. The rec district doesn't have that. If we finish in the red, that's on us. It's a, it's a different operating procedure. But at the same time, you're still looking at the exact same thing. We are, you would have to pass a tax, or the community would have to fund it, then they would come in.
So, once you say, "Hey, we've got $10 million ready for you," then they'll be like, "Okay, we'll come in and take over."
Yeah, essentially. And again, I'm not saying that they're not a great organization at all. It's just, but that's how it's, that's how it would work. And the simple fact is, is that the YMCA could come to this community, but we're going to have to fund it. And at the same time, we've already been doing that now successfully for 58 years at the Recreation District. I think when you look at the presentation earlier, you can't question that. Why did we all of a sudden expand from a pool to over 300 acres and well over, just doing the quick math, you're looking at 45 to 50 programs? No, we're successfully doing things. So, now you're repeating services and on top of that, putting additional funding to a group that is repeating services. So, as a community, why? Now, if you build it, they'll operate it. But we're already here, and we've done the pool successfully for 57 years. And every engineer that has looked at that pool said the same conclusion. You did your job. So, that's where we stand on that.
Kansas City's a unique community. We definitely need a custom fit that works exactly the way we need it to work for us. So, I know you have more questions, but I did see that we have a citizen that popped up with a hand. Is that okay if we answer that question and we'll come back? So, that's for Julie. And Julie, you're still, oh, there we go. You're unmuted now.
Thank you.
Maybe. So, Julie, we can't hear you. So, maybe while we're working on that, we'll come back and answer another question.
How does a bid process work?
So, are you referring to building the pool or the feasibility?
The building of the pool is what we're getting asked.
So, building of a pool, most likely what you're looking to is a quest for qualifications first, because it is a commercial public pool. You want to make sure that firms that are bidding on it or putting in a proposal are qualified to do so. Then, the next stage would then be going with a request for proposal. The reason is, the builder could then get creative with the design. We could see which is going to be the best design that works and then also fits within the budget. So, it gives us more flexibility to look at proposals. Sometimes the proposal, it's the lowest bid gets it. Sometimes it's not. But we need creativity here. But there would have to be an RFQ to an RFP, and Ryan has more experience in that. So, would we be, would that be about the right way to go?
Yeah, yeah. RFP, you know, you can include a component that, you know, weighs qualifications and things like that. So, you know, from the city's standpoint, we put out RFPs, RFQs quite frequently. We use a system called BidNet. It's a national system that puts this out there. So, we try to cast a very wide net to get interested parties to bid on it. So, it's a competitive process. So, we're keeping the cost low for the taxpayers.
A question was asked, would we do COPs or bond? That is still to be determined. Either way, it could work. If it's a sales tax, technically, we could probably go with a, with a bond. If it's a one levy, mill levy question, or a one question for a mill levy, then you're probably looking at more of a COP. But you can be flexible, and according to bond council that we talked with, either option could potentially work. Yep?
We are seeing a lot more families recreating in the Arkansas River. The river is not a replacement for a pool. We need more water safety and water education to be given to the citizens. Could we somehow run buses and work something out with our neighboring towns to get our children's swim lessons while we don't have a pool?
So, I spoke with the Florence Pool Manager yesterday. Their facility is completely booked. Swim lessons are sold out. All their pool parties are reserved because now there's only one pool here in eastern Fremont County. It is a smaller facility, so they can't hold as many, which puts some limitations on that. So, they're already booked out. So, that's not even an option in this situation for that. As far as the YMCA, I can't, like the Pueblo YMCA, I couldn't speak to that situation at all, or some of the ones in Springs. But I don't know, I don't think we're at a point where we could do that this year now. Could we look at it something for next year, potentially? But based on the numbers that we're seeing, Florence is already selling out.
And I'm just going to add this real quick. I know of a lot of families whose kids are now taking their swim lessons at Florence, from Canyon. I mean, an awful lot of kids going to Florence. And it's fantastic that they are welcoming.
Is the swim team involved in any of this process? And how much revenue does a swim team bring in for meets?
So, the swim team is actively involved in everything. Melissa is one of our board members. She's been a part of Piranhas, and you can speak to Piranhas on this one. But I will also tell you that the Piranhas, like anybody else, has a tight budget. They represent the kids in our community. And when you're looking at a community that has over 60% of its population on free and reduced lunch, funds are tight. And Piranhas, I'm not going to speak how they set their fees. Melissa would know better than us. However, based on the income that we get, it's normally anywhere between $2,000 and $2,500 for the season for practices. Last year was $2,000. This year, we're looking at $2,500. And then for the meet, it is normally $5 a head for the meet. But the Piranhas are responsible for bringing in extra porta potties. They are allowed to use the facilities. They're responsible for cleaning it, everything else, organizing it. And they do a great job. But Melissa, you can speak more to the Piranhas than I could. But I do want to state this. The Piranhas does not make or break whether the pool finishes in the black. Whether the Piranhas are there or not, we're subsidizing the pool significantly at the tune of around $50,000 a year. So, just want to be clear. A swim team helps with revenue, but they're not your make and break.
Thanks, Kyle. Yeah, definitely this year, the Piranhas over the past few years have been doing a great job with increasing membership and therefore raising, you know, raising a lot more funds. The swim meets, our annual swim meet is our biggest fundraiser, and we probably, in a really great year, can make up to $5,000, which is still not great, but it's enough to keep the team going. And we do, we have a small budget that's just enough to keep things going from year to year. Right now, Florence Pool is also hosting the swim team as well. So, I think we get it a couple nights a week, and we're paying about what we would have paid the rec district this year. So, that's really generous of the Florence Pool to be accommodating everybody from Canyon City this year. So, but, yeah, I think the swim team is always begging for time and really not one of the biggest contributors. But certainly, I like to say, we're probably the biggest appreciators of that pool. We love that pool, and we miss it.
Will the pool be closed when the swim team has their meets like it has been before?
I think that would probably be the cart before the horse in this situation, because we don't know what facility that we're looking at. We'd be making an assumption on that, on that, on that front. Normally, when the Piranhas hold a swim meet, the pool is shut down for three days so they can operate the swim meet. The other thing that should be mentioned when there is a swim meet, there is a significant, it is, if I remember correct, the Canyon City meet, just like the track meet we just had, is the most attended swim meet in the league that they are in along the Arkansas Valley, which means that a significant number of out-of-town people are coming into our community, spending their dollars in town and doing that. So, there is, there is a benefit to the community. It's not a Taylor Swift concert benefit, want to be clear, but it is a benefit. And they're here for three days. And there are times that they are staying in hotel rooms in that timeframe. So, they are spending money here. So, yes, there is an inconvenience, but there is a benefit citywide, not just rec district-wide, when something like this occurs. It would be premature to say for sure how that programming would work when a swim meet is in place. I will tell you, with that many kids, if you had open swim at that time, like in a recreation pool, while swimming is going on, you have utter chaos. You have no idea how many kids are coming in. So, I just, I just want to keep that in mind. But it would be premature to give you a firm answer at this point.
Can we do something with the school district and partner with them on the pool and a school swim team to help with funding?
Yeah, so, there have been multiple meetings with the school district. I've reached out to Adam Hartman directly and had a meeting. Kyle and I have had a couple of meetings with the superintendent as well. So, those discussions have been opened, and we are looking at different- So those discussions have been opened and we are looking at different options and I think there's more to come, but right now it's still kind of in its infancy.
It seems like when we had our conversations in the past for the recreational, potential recreation center, it felt like their participation would probably more in the lines, I mean, to be realistic, of that they would pay the pool to do swim lessons for the kids during the school year, so that it would be like part of their PE course, so that every child would get opportunities to have swim lessons and that would be a source of funding for.
That was one of many options on the table when George and I spoke at that time.
Yeah, that was a long time ago, different superintendent and.
Seems like a long time ago.
It feels like a long time ago.
Yeah, it does. It does.
But yeah, but yeah, so that was just one of the examples that could be.
Local jurisdictions may impose and collect their own sales and/or excess tax on retail marijuana. Can we not do a marijuana tax?
I'll answer from from administration standpoint. I don't know that a marijuana tax would generate enough revenue to build a pool. That's something that we would have to crunch numbers on, but you know, as far as whether or not that's a policy that city wants to adopt, I would leave that to the elected body.
So the question to have a recreational marijuana tax did come to Canyon City in two thousand and eighteen. And we did try to crunch numbers on what the potential revenue could be. It was actually really hard to find it. But what we did discover is that throughout the state of Colorado, there were a handful of communities that were just making fistfuls of money. But most of them, it was a very minimal increase in sales tax revenue for them. If you combine that with the recent trend now that the recreational marijuana sales are actually going down and not up, I don't know if it would be wise to put a ten million dollar facility banked on just one single commodity. And that this, in two thousand and eighteen, the city voted sixty-one percent against it. Since then Florence also asked more recently for a recreational marijuana sales tax and that was also defeated. So it's, could be likely that that's just something this community is not going to support.
Before you ask your next question, Kyle asked me, he said that he's heard, you know, questions about a lodging tax as well. So, you know, lodging tax within the city limits of Canyon City, every one percent of lodging tax would generate only about eighty-one thousand dollars a year, so. You know, you're looking at debt service probably of about a million dollars. That would be a very hefty lodging tax and would probably be detrimental to the hotel companies here in town.
Waiting until next year's election and then possibly construction in two thousand and twenty-five is a long time. Could we have a special election to vote?
And I'll take this one. We are limited under Colorado law in terms of what elections we can present any kind of tax or taper issue to the voters. The next election would be this November, however, the deadline to place something on the ballot was last week maybe. Or, well, okay, it's the twenty-seventh. But the reality of the situation is we don't, as we've been discussing this whole meeting, have any of the information we would need to place a ballot issue on the ballot in November and we wouldn't have that information by the end of this month. And that's when we'd have to inform the county clerk that we would be on the ballot for that. And that's just, I mean, talk about putting the cart before the horse. If we don't know, we would be going in blind without any knowledge as to what the community wants, what the community would support and that kind of thing. Furthermore, the electorate in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three would look a lot like the electorate did in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one. And I'm not sure that we would get very much of a different outcome. So the next election after this November that we could place something on the ballot would be November of two thousand and twenty-four. And so that is realistically the next election where we can place something on the ballot. I don't think anyone realistically thinks it was possible by the time we knew we would have to close this pool that we could get anything on the ballot in November, even if that was politically a good idea, which I think that it's fair to say it probably isn't.
Parking is inadequate at the current location. What will be done if the pool stays at the current location?
I think that, you know, this goes back to some of the discussions. We've broached this with the school district and some of our initial discussions as well. You know, looking at creative options, you know, I think, again, it's probably too early to answer that question right now, but we are, you know, opening those discussions with the school district and, you know, Kyle mentioned the basketball courts earlier. That could be a potential option, so some of that will probably get weighed out in the feasibility study as well.
Nathan, you want to add, Kyle?
No, I think it's, I think everything right now is to be determined, but knowing that right now with the design they have, the basketball court's not taken, there are some options. There could be some options with 12th Street. We don't know. We're just gonna have to wait and see. It's, it is so early to determine that and at the same time, you're looking at multiple entities that are going to need to be involved in any discussion on parking in that area.
Right. And the school district could be included in that potential conversation. We'd had conversations on that too, like could 12th Street be closed? Could we turn, you know, it's basically a dead-end street. We have Red Park. We have property at the school. There's lots, could be lots of potential ways to find solutions for parking.
Can we look for someone in the community who has credentials and is able to do the demolition of the pool and possibly be a donor to save on that cost for us?
Yes. So one of the questions we get asked, and we mentioned this during the presentation, is how can, you know, why can't we just do a local community build on a pool? We've, I believe, explained why that's not a good idea. It's flat out a bad idea. However, to do a community or if there was demolition that could be done by the community, that's a different animal. There are absolutely companies in this community that could do demolition. If the community wanted to come together and take a chunk off the price tag, and I have no idea. You're looking at, Ryan can jump in on some of this stuff, but you're looking at, you know, they obviously have equipment and labor. They do have disposal fees. I can't remember what the other one was. For the transportation of the equipment here.
Mobilization.
Yeah, so mobilization. So there are, so there are all kinds of fees that go into it. Now, if a group of companies or somebody in town with the capabilities of doing that wants to jump in and and go for it and potentially take a significant chunk off the the price of the facility, that works because remember that ten to eleven million dollar figure included demolition. And I don't know what that actually costs, but I will tell you that every piece of concrete, rebar, the building, the lines that are there, whether they're water lines, sewer lines, everything is gonna need to come out and start again. So that is something that the community can do. So if community, here's your challenge. You want to take something off the price? There's your answer.
I can tell you, you know, we recently had a bid for Skyline Steel for the demolition of that site. There's some thick concrete there, rebar. It was over a hundred thousand dollars. I think it was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. A lot of that had to do with the tipping fees for concrete and the weight, so. You're talking about a facility that has a lot of concrete and imagine the demolition cost, at least the tipping fees at the dump are gonna be fairly expensive.
How does the city prioritize their projects?
Yeah, I think, you know, with this question, you know, different, different taxing entities, not just the city, you know, we all prioritize differently. So the city, we look at our master plans, we look at our five-year capital improvement plans and we prioritize projects based off of that and the community needs. So that's really where we focus our priority list. I don't know if the Rec District has a different answer for for how they prioritize projects.
Essentially, we look at what projects we can make work within the budget and we also look at grant projects. So most of the projects and capital improvement projects that we look at are years in the making. We start to identify, so we're working on another project potentially in John Griffin Park. We started doing work with Luke Javernik on that over a year ago. And we're just slowly moving along. That's gonna be a multi-year project. Rouse Park Improvement Project, Dawn, we worked on that for over two years. The most recent one, over two years. The playground was a year and a half. And it doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're trying to balance grants, because without grants, we get none of it. And we were at the point, by the way, on the Rouse Park Playground where either we successfully got that GOCO grant or we were going to have to rip out their playground and there would be nothing there. That's where we were at. And thankfully, we got the grant. So when we do it, it's a, it's a long process and it normally involves grant writing, donations, public meetings, things along those lines to try to generate interest because granting agencies want local interest.
I would add for our prioritization is that we hope and we definitely try to prioritize our projects based on what the community wants and their demands are. They want us to fix potholes, so we're fixing potholes. They want us to fix the streets, so we're fixing the streets. They don't want to be flooded by stormwater, so we're fixing stormwater. So, I mean, that's, we're hoping that we are listening to the public and delivering what they are asking for.
Did the city receive funds from American Rescue Plan Act money? If so, how much and why wasn't the pool a part of those funds being utilized?
Yes, we did. We received four point two million dollars and again, I think it goes back to those prioritization of projects. And I know what your next question is, so, you know, so we've spent quarter of a million dollars on new radios for the police departments. The radios that we had were no longer supported. You couldn't get parts for them. We're spending about a quarter of a million dollars updating city systems, financial systems, records management systems, things of that nature. We have spent about a half a million dollars on security system upgrades for cybersecurity cameras at our parks for, to monitor for vandalism and things along those, that nature. We have budgeted one point two million dollars for community broadband, which has been awarded divisionary broadband. We budgeted just over a million dollars to put a new water line into Reynolds Avenue. So we've got that. And then two hundred thousand dollars went to the Rhodes Avenue Stormwater Project. And we, right now, we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted for the SCADA system at the water treatment plant. That's the, all the parts and software that runs the water treatment system. Again, that's a system that is outdated and they no longer make parts and replacement parts for the system that we have.
So that all goes to bare minimum services for the public in general. And just also a reminder that when we receive the ARPA funds, there's an opportunity for us to make some legacy investments for Canyon City to set us up, to get us back into the twenty-first century on some things. And this pool does not belong to Canyon City. It's a Parks and Recreation's pool.
With ARPA funds, there are other requirements, so you know, you have to, as a recipient of the funds, you have to have the funds dedicated by two thousand and twenty-four and spent by two thousand and twenty-six and you know, so these projects were identified very early on through that process.
And again, we do want to mention at the Rec District, we were fortunate to receive three hundred thousand dollars from the county in ARPA funds. That was the reason we were able to do the Rouse Park Improvement Project. Without that, we're still dealing with the old lights that we had. And they helped us with our infrastructure. Special districts were left out of ARPA funding. It was, if a county or a municipality wanted to help a special district, they could. I give, I compliment Kevin Grantham and Debbie Bell, as well as Dwayne McFall, who worked with us, provided those ARPA funds, and it wasn't just us. It was other special districts. There are nine in our county. And they did other projects and then they helped out businesses and nonprofits. So I want to be clear that the city and the county invested those ARPA funds to help upgrade infrastructure and needed infrastructure that otherwise would not have happened. And so I believe that the city and the county should be commended with how they used it. The wealth was spread and a lot of things were done for the betterment of the citizens. The pool would have taken all of the county's ARPA funds and then some. I know that I, personally, I don't know if that would have been wise to just say, we're gonna dump everything into a pool and forget about everything else that needs to be done in our community. Our community needs a pool. But that is one thing within the community. We have to keep that in mind. So we appreciate what the county and the city have done to improve this community.
And we just have one last question. Is it possible to do a natural river-fed pool swimming hole?
And I'll take that one. We live in the, I'll start by saying we live in the American West and the old saying is out here in the West, whiskey's for drinking and waters for fighting. Every drop of water that we see running through that river and through our community is owned by someone else. And so the first challenge in doing something like that is obtaining water rights. And then probably a adjudicating a change in the use of those water rights in water court, which that process alone can take a number of years and a lot of money in attorney's fees, not to the attorney for the district, but to attorneys in Colorado Springs and Denver, most likely. So that's the first hurdle in doing something like that is actually obtaining those water rights and getting those adjudicated. And that's not even a guarantee that that's something that we could do. But then the second question is, okay, we have a water-fed pool. What does that look like? Because it seems to me that that still requires the, a lot of the exact same infrastructure that we would need for any other community pool. You still have to make sure that the water is sanitary. You should, so you still have to, you know, do something to sanitize it. And now we're not talking about the treated water that we would be getting from the city, but we're talking about untreated water. How do you treat that before you put it into the pool? And you still have to pay for a new facility. You've got to pay now, I think, for some new real estate adjacent to the river, which that's not cheap. You gotta build the pool. You gotta build the bathhouse. You gotta build the boiler. You gotta put in the the pumps and the sand filters and everything else that you'd have to do for the, that you'd be putting, do, if you're putting in a pool there by the high school. So I don't, I don't know that that saves any money and in fact, it probably is a lot more expensive to do it that way. And it probably will take a lot more time to do just because of the water right issues.
Are there any more questions or comments from the audience who wish, yeah, come on up, please?
Hi, my name's Ben. Just, I had a bunch of other questions, but they've most of been answered. But on the feasibility study, did I hear that right? Twenty-five thousand for the feasibility study?
No, we said it could range between twenty-five thousand and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. Was there one done for the Rec Center when that was?
Technically, there were two.
Okay. And how much did those cost?
The first one, that was Ballard King. I don't remember that number.
Yeah, I want to say that was about twenty-five to thirty. Does that sound about right?
I, I'm not, yeah, I think that sounds about right. And then the last one, I believe, was about eighty thousand. So somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand or a little over was spent on feasibility work, surveys, things like that.
Sure. I mean, is there any duplication of effort there that we could take from those surveys that would somehow be applicable to this situation? I mean, those are, those are pretty, pretty expensive documents there, so. Is there anything we can dig out of those and use for this?
Yeah, I think you run a risk there because obviously it wasn't a successful ballot measure, so I think the question is, what, what did? So, um, I think, think the question is, what, what did the survey and feasibility study not get right the first time?
So the first study, it should be mentioned, began in 2018 and wrapped up in early 2019. The second one began in late 2019. Uh, we were starting to get to a wrap-up point before COVID hit. Um, and then, uh, we actually finished that work in, in 2021. But survey work was concluded, uh, for the most part, within that feasibility by early March of, of 2020. So you're looking at outdated results, results that had nothing to do with a, uh, potential of just an outdoor pool. Um, you're, you're looking at basically a completely different project. So, I mean, granted, they're, they're both recreation, but you're looking at different facilities.
Yeah. So, so, so there's expensive studies were done. What did those do to help? You said there was, there's the one component of that is, uh, I guess, surveying the public and this sort of thing. So what went wrong with those studies that the results of those and what was put on the ballot and why it wasn't passed? So I mean, there's some sort of gap in what those feasibility studies predicted and then what the vote was from the public. So it seemed like there's some, some issues there with these. So what are we going to get out of this feasibility study if we do it again? Or we do another one?
So, so I don't know if it was an issue per se of, of the feasibility studies and the survey work got it wrong. The problem was, is that the last survey ended in 2020. Between that, you had the pandemic hit, which changed some things, especially questions on financing as businesses were shut down, some other things, or at least had to change how they operate. You also looked at 2021. There was an, there was a change in assessment, uh, which meant that your property, uh, your, your property taxes went up in 2021. So you had that, that impacted the decision-making process. You also had, uh, questions on, uh, on the REC center being placed, uh, at the Abbey. And then that, that Abbey project then coming to light, which I think changed things. There were a lot of things that occurred within that window that basically changed the entire playing field. That you almost needed a, another survey to go out in early August or late July to really hash those things out. And we did do another survey. And keep in mind, even that survey, which happened in, I believe it was April, May, that came out positive. But the climate changed a matter of months later. So, so you have to keep that in mind.
So if we go. Excuse me, I'd like to, I'd like to jump in here just a second. There's actually another, I think ideally, what these surveys do is, is not only, um, find out and discover and learn what the public's, uh, ideas are on this, but there's also an educational part. And so when you do the surveys, ideally, you're not just learning, but you're also teaching and, uh, being a provider of facts to the public so that they can, uh, more fully get the, get, get the facts in front of them, help them make the decisions that they have to. And that's why you, that's why you really like it to be broad-based and as interactive with the public as you can.
Yeah. And Kyle, you probably talked a little bit more about this, but, you know, the feasibility study is also looking at how much it's going to cost to run that specific program and informs the decision on, on what that operating budget's going to look like.
It absolutely does. So there's a pro forma that's a part of it. So you have an idea of what's going in, what's your cost recovery, what your expenses are going to be as you're dealing with the experts in the profession that can really dial in and look at your community makeup and compare that with other communities of similar size, summer demographics. The one we can get compared to the most normally is Montrose. Um, but, but they would look at those comparables and see what, what direction that we should be going. And, and so, so that does have to, that does have to bear out, remember, the original goal of the REC center was to go in November of 2020. The pandemic changed that. Um, we were forced basically to go in 21. So within that timeframe, things changed.
Is it just, just, and I don't mean to harp on this point because it's a fairly small point, but, um, on the feasibility part, but is there something that could be done to kind of sharpen that focus to look at what, um, um, Stein had mentioned about, um, folk, trying to narrow in on who's going to be actually voting? And try to correlate that with getting a plan that's going to be passed, um, if that makes any sense.
That's all part of the process.
So, so direct whoever does these feasibility studies is, direct them to focus, give some laser focus on, let's get this thing passed. Um, and dial in on who those people are that are, that are showing up regularly to vote and, um, do something to make that happen.
And, and, and they want to because for the most part, when it comes to recreation facilities, the people doing the feasibility studies, they're also the planners and designers that design these facilities as well. So they, they want to make sure they ask the right questions to know where things are at. It's just these firms, not only do they build, construct, design, but they also have an entire group of people whose sole purpose is to do feasibility and pro forma. So they are motivated just as much as anyone else.
They, they, they go so far as, you know, those surveys go out to, uh, registered voters, uh, looking at, um, you know, plus or minus confidence levels on, you know, what, you know, the survey results and things like that. So, uh, you know, it, it's more than just a survey. It's, you know, th- these things are, are pretty targeted.
Sure. Just a fi- a final thing. Um, I make my way, way around the community quite a bit, talk to quite a few people. Um, and a lot of different people that I've talked to, I find to be fairly reasonable individuals. And on the REC center, they just couldn't quite push the yes button on that one because of mostly cost. Um, and it's not scientific. That's just me make my way around. So, um, but they said if it was just a stripped-down pool, whatever that means, we would have said yes. So whatever that's worth.
Thank you.
Can I just add a quick thing to that? And this goes back to some of what we talked about already that I think it just illustrates the constraints that the REC district has since they can only do a property tax. And even though it was well explained before the vote on that REC district, it was going to have a really noticeable impact on people's property tax bills. Sales tax is gonna, that could potentially look different and be shared more broadly with visitors and so forth. So just important to keep that in mind.
And, and ju- just to go back from a historical standpoint, when we did the survey, we, we asked voters, um, in, in that survey, which they preferred, a sales tax or a property tax. And the, uh, the voters came back with a property tax, which is what, the direction that I believe the REC district decided to go that way.
And we do have Commissioner Grantham here, if you'd like to address counsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, the board and council members. I appreciate you guys doing this. I am a citizen of Canyon City and a, within the REC district as well. Uh, as far as the demolition goes, um, I, I think we already have it arranged. I think five o'clock tomorrow morning, Cooper and Nick and I are going to be out there with sledgehammers. And, uh, we're going to take care of that tomorrow.
Bring a wheelbarrow.
And bring, we need a couple of wheelbarrows. We do need a little help, but, uh, we're ready to roll on that. Um, I guess a question and some comments. As far as, I think the round number you're giving right now is ten million dollars. Is that correct, give or take?
That's going to be the, yeah, it's going to be right in that neighborhood somewhere.
So I, I guess since we're running a, talking about a 2024 question on the ballot, is ten million dollars, twenty, twenty-three dollars, or is it twenty, twenty-five dollars when this thing would actually be under construction?
So the reason that we did that, again, apples to apples, um, when Carbondale was at eight million, we know that their project needed to be closer to nine. So that's why we set that ten to eleven million dollar figure. Looking at inflation. So that's why that figure was thrown out.
That's what I was wondering because of Carbondale. And that's why I asked, because of Carbondale. And if that was built into your estimate already.
Uh, it was. Councilman Hunseker did a great job in, in that. And of course, the details will come out, uh, potentially of any facility within feasibility. It was high-level numbers, but they wanted to give us an apples-to-apples comparison and Carbondale was the one that was the most relevant.
Okay, good. Um, I suppose just a couple of, of thoughts, at least random thoughts, um, on, on what's being planned. You know, we, uh, we all travel in different circles and sometimes they cross each other and they overlap. And you hear different things from different people on why past measures didn't go through. And I'm sure you guys are square in the middle of hearing all of those. What I, what I often hear is, well, that stuff will never pass in Fremont County. That stuff will never pass in Canyon City. That stuff will never pass in the REC district footprint. Uh, that's simply not true, right? Uh, Canyon City has proven that they can pass a road improvement tax. Fremont County has proven that it can pass a sales tax increase for the sheriff's office. Not only that, it passed it twice, the second time removing the sunset. Um, the school district has passed numerous, uh, increases here and there. And so people are, are ready to say yes to things that they are shown the need for. And I think we're at that point, um, where maybe in the last two, and you use the term Rolls Royce, um, I've also heard the term Taj Mahal. And may have even said that word a couple of times myself, uh, in, in past ones. And you're right, Kyle. The, those weren't the Rolls Royces and Taj Mahals, but for local voters, they probably were, maybe. Um, if we talk about what we're willing to do and what we're willing to give up in the ideal in order to pass something so that we have a pool, um, I think this is very possible for us. And I think we can do it. Um, getting back to Councilmember Stein's points early on, um, and as far as what the electorate, um, and who we talk to, uh, not only who we talk to, but what we're bringing to them, um, these things are important. Things that I'm not sure a feasibility study, uh, necessarily can grasp totally in a local tax, tax mill levy question. Um, there are people that I, I know Dan and I know a lot of these folks that deal with this. And, and you mentioned Magellan. Magellan is great at, at these sorts of things. Um, and assessing the, the temperature of, of a community. Um, I would, uh, I would encourage at least the line of thought that, uh, if this didn't pass twice, are we willing to go here? If, if the question is a twelve-month facility or nothing, um, I'm afraid we get nothing. And that's what I'm worried about. If, if we can get a three or four-month facility or a five-month facility, given our weather here, then maybe we go after the five-month facility. And that's what we have. I think the, the thing that's different now that we have, uh, in this community versus the prior two questions, even most recently, we, in those prior two questions, mostly electorate looks, looks at that. At least this is what I'm hearing. And I could be completely way off base and, and the people I'm talking to as well. But what they saw was a facility for which they already, they, they look at it and they go, well, we already have a pool. So why do we need a new pool? Not knowing the condition of it, not knowing the short-term nature of it. But that's what they saw. And so what's different now is we don't have a pool. We have a need. And, and I think this community, this county, this city, the, the REC district and the voters that are going to be overlapping in all of those, uh, I think we can go to and say, this is our need. We have a need. And I think, I think you guys are primed for a, a good outcome on this, to be perfectly honest. And, and, but I encourage you not to, to, uh, ask for everything when we could get something. And at least give that some consideration, if that makes sense. Um, because I think we can get this done. And I love those two plans. I think they look great. And who knows? Maybe there'll be some other mockups and, and, and drawings to come forward, but I think that's a great location and, and the great, um, great ideas in those, in those footprints that you showed. And so I, I'm encouraged. Um, this is coming from someone that, you know, is in the just say no clan. But, uh, guess what? We, we, we pass things in this community when there's a need. And I think we can show that there is a need because the reality is, we don't have one now and we need a pool. So keep up the great work. Um, I know you guys' work is just starting. But, uh, I hope you're encouraged that, uh, I think we have a possibility of getting something across the finish line at this time. Okay?
Thank you. Um, thank you for being here tonight. Commissioner Grantham, we really appreciate your representation here. It seems like a really good, um, really good note to maybe conclude this meeting on tonight. I know there'll be plenty more of us.
Hold on, Ashley.
To get together.
Before we go so far, I do want to thank you guys for hosting. Um, and it is awesome. Warms the heart to get together, to try to prob, to solve some problems. We are wondering if, uh, you guys could find it in your hearts and your budget to hopefully commit some money to help us with this feasibility study. We do have some reserves that we put aside for the pool and obviously we don't know what that number is. So once we have a better idea, we're hoping that we can count on some support from you guys.
Well, let's, let's punch, bring, we find out, let's, let's punch some numbers. We did help participate in the last feasibility study and so let's see what we, what we can do on our side.
Sounds great. Thank you.
And it will have to come to council to approve.
It, it would. We, we would, uh, probably enter into some, um, IGA of some kind.
Okay, sounds good. All right. If there, is there anything else? Yes.
I just wanted to ask when the county's budget process starts.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.